When County Attorney Kent Volkmar shows up, I'm going to move item four up in the sequence. So we'll be taking some of this in a different order than what it's presented at. But outside of that, I think we'll be fine. So getting started, first item business is item number one, which is a discussion, approval or disapproval of a resolution number 091521-LE of the Pinellas County Board of Supervisors.
Charles, there you are.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Board, Charles Kmet, Emergency Manager for Pinellas County. This first item before you is, I don't want to call it necessarily formality, but it is in somewhat that sense. The Title VIII of the Arizona Administrative Code requires whenever a jurisdiction is going to ask for state assistance or make that application for state assistance, which is essentially asking the governor to declare an emergency, they have to do it through a county. Unless, the caveats to that is if the county were to refuse such declaration of the city or town, or if the county decided not to provide an answer to the city or town in a timely fashion, then they can sort of by-step the county and go direct to the governor's office with that. Excuse me, the City of Coolidge did do an emergency declaration from the incident that occurred, the gas pipe incident that occurred August 15th. And they incurred a lot of costs, but the county itself did not incur as many costs to where we would, as a county, have to declare a local emergency for the county. So in the, excuse me, in order to not, I guess, you know, neither one of those two options for the state to go forward didn't really sound good as far as relationship building and maintaining the relationship that we have with the city. So what we decided to do was a little bit different from the norm, is that we did this resolution in support of the city and supporting them to move forward with making their request to the state for assistance for their declaration. So that's what you have in front of you.
Okay, very good. Any questions on this item? Here, seeing none?
None.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve item one as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a couple of seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it.
Thank you, Chuck.
Have a good day.
You, too.
Item number two is a work session to discuss the HUD requirements for the participation in certain programs. And I have Matt Thomas presenting this today. And I think this came from some questions that were brought to the sheriff's office in previous meetings.
Yes, sir. Matt Thomas, Pinellas County Sheriff's Office Chief Deputy. And Board's pleasure.
Yeah, go forth.
I think the main question was, will this affect the sheriff's office? So we're talking about the HUD requirement for the ELOY grant. And there's two items that were in question, and that was number nine, item A and B under nine. Prohibit the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within its jurisdiction against individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. And B, enforce applicable state and local laws against physically barring entrance to or exit from a facility or location, excuse me, which is a subject of a nonviolent civil rights demonstration. So for us, this has no effect on how we do business. We're guided by case law, state law, and the Constitution, and this would not prohibit us from doing our job.
Okay. You have, Mr. Chairman?
No detailed question or?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Chief Thomas, we looked into this, and we were concerned that it would indeed impact the sheriff's office's ability to do their jobs. And I have a copy of the agreement with law enforcement that says it has to be signed in front of an attorney so that there's some teeth in the arrangement and you understand fully what it is we're signing. And under this agreement, anybody who's benefited by the funds, part of the agreement is having law enforcement sign this agreement. Do you know if the sheriff is willing to sign this agreement?
Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I, in talking to our legal, I don't know that that is actually required of us. I don't, from our perspective, this doesn't prohibit anything from us, and it's an agreement with ELOY. So I don't know that we would be required to sign it as an agreement with ELOY.
Correct. I don't know where the distribution of funds come up. I didn't know if a portion of that would impact sheriff's office. If we do receive it, then we're agreeing to the terms. And in this one, even ELOY would have to sign an agreement that said they would not get in the way of a nonviolent protest. And my question for the county attorney last go-around was, has the federal government defined a nonviolent protest? Do you have any definition, have you seen, from the federal government, of a nonviolent protest?
No. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, no, I haven't. And I would say the office hasn't. And quite frankly, in reading the language, there is some ambiguity, and there's not a, like, real defined definition of that or excessive force, which is actually preferred because we have to deal with everything as it is before us. So when we deal with any situation, if we define it too much, if we put too many policies in place, we box ourselves in. So the language as it's written allows for discretion on our part so that we can view the situation, determine if there's any laws being broken, and then move forward from there. So as defined, again, this does not prohibit us from doing our job.
I happen to do some research, and under the Bureau of Justice statistics, I found a definition, nonviolent crimes are defined as property, drug, and public order offenses, which do not involve a threat of harm or actual attack upon a victim. So it's good that we have this conversation so the public is aware that we're doing the research, we're making sure that we're not hamstringing our law enforcement. And my concern is that if, even if ELOY signs this, they will be hamstrung. And if you recall the video of a lady, I think she was in a car with her child, and the police couldn't respond or wouldn't respond during a demonstration, I just don't want to arrive at the point in Pinellas County where we are limited in our ability to help people who are confronted in a situation where there's a nonviolent demonstration, but property damage is occurring. And even if a demonstration were, if we were to sign this agreement and demonstrators were to enter this building 200 at a time, this would prevent a law enforcement agency from acting against them, you would be, if you had signed the agreement. So I'm glad to have your conversation today. And do you have any other comments or thoughts on this?
Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, yeah, I would say that despite any agreement in place, we as a sheriff's office are held to the standard of upholding the Constitution and the laws. So if the laws are broken, that's where we step in and we enforce those laws. So this agreement would not restrict our ability to do that.
If we sign this, I would disagree with you there. But we have, we'll have that conversation made with the county attorney.
Yes, sir.
That's, my concern is that we research this well before we sign it.
And Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, if I may, I would just counter that this is an agreement for funds. And we're talking agreement for funds compared to enforcing laws. So for us, an agreement to funds is not going to stop us from upholding the Constitution and enforcing state law.
Is Mr. Volkmar available?
Actually, DCA states, I think, for this particular subject.
Sure thing. I have a question in that regard. So I still don't understand, are we going to, is the sheriff's office, is it necessary for the sheriff's office to sign this agreement for the county housing department to receive these funds?
Chairman, Supervisor? No, there's no place in the agreement that I've reviewed that shows any space for the sheriff or any other law enforcement entity to sign. This portion of the agreement is based on some federal regulations that govern the distribution and management of HUD, CD, BG program funds. And that federal regulation, basically, one of the things it stipulates to is it says that grant funding recipients have to commit to enforcing a policy against the use of excessive force under the circumstances described here in a nonviolent civil rights demonstration, and then also to enforce any laws that would otherwise protect people from being barred from public locations for the purpose of nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. The grant recipients, oh, I'm sorry.
You go ahead.
The grant recipients are the ones who signed for this. Typically, that would be a local governmental unit, such as a county, by and through their Board of Supervisors, from municipality, the mayor and city council. But in the agreements that I've seen, including the one in question, there wasn't a location that called for or provided space for the signature of a law enforcement agency or agent.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Any questions? You go ahead. Supervisor Goodman?
Yes, and I can appreciate what Supervisor Kavanaugh is speaking about. And that's where, you know, that's one thing that I wanted to hear specific from our counsel, because you're our legal counsel. And to make sure that all of our, any kind of restrictions that hinders us or our law enforcement to do their job, that's where, that's where I need to feel satisfaction in that. Based on what you've just stated and everything else, I'm good. I'm good with it.
Absolutely. And I would add, just for the consolation and the additional kind of background, the use of excessive force is already prohibited under the U.S. Constitution. And the hundreds and thousands of case situations that have demonstrated that line, you know, between reasonable and unreasonable or excessive force. So oftentimes, the federal government will include these kind of terms in a contract, not that the contract binds us to do them, we're already bound by the law, but it gives them grounds to pull the funding as a breach of contract, right? Separate and apart from any other legal consequences government actors would face for using excessive force, they could say, hey, you breached this term of the contract, so we're stopping the funding. So it gives them that as a more immediate tool to deal with that situation.
So if I might continue, so what you're stating is, thank you, Mr. Chair, is that what you're reading in this contract, and you're both comfortable, our sheriff's department and our legal department is both comfortable with any of the restrictions or anything of the nature that the community has got misinformation on in regards to this particular contract. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, Supervisor Goodman, that's same for us. What County Attorney State spoke to, for us, it just, this reads to us as if you use excessive force or if you don't allow peaceful assembly in public places, we can take this funding away from the person it's been granted to. And that's what it does. So it still does not prohibit us from doing our job.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I have some more concerns about, so if we, if we agree to this, and we are going to limit our law enforcement's ability to act during a nonviolent protest where property damage may be occurring, because you're going to enforce the state law, your department is, has our insurance carrier weighed in on this? Would there, would there be liability or exposure in terms of an insurance carrier? Because if we acted to stop a nonviolent protest where only property damage is occurring, and we've agreed not to do that, then now do we have a 1983 claim or other civil claim? And I think the-
Yeah, I think that's a lawyer question.
Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
That's the first time I've seen Chief Thomas speechless.
So this doesn't prevent law enforcement from reacting to violations of law. It basically, it obligates the recipient of the funds to confirm that they have a policy that would prohibit the use of excessive force in this situation. Most law enforcement agencies, in fact, all of them ought to, and I'm sure that nearly all of them, in fact, do, have policies in place that prohibit the use of excessive force under any circumstances that would encompass and include dealing with a peaceful protest. Now, so long as the force that is used in response to a violation of law is reasonable, it is not excessive. And so it would not touch upon this contractual term. But just to be clear, this contractual term, it basically is HUD's way of confirming that the recipient of the grant funds has a policy in place that prohibits excessive force under these circumstances. It doesn't touch upon whether that policy got violated. It doesn't touch upon whether an incident of alleged excessive force occurred or not. It's just confirming that the entity has policies in place that prohibit excessive force.
Okay. Supervisor Goodman?
And again, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. But based on Supervisor Kavanaugh's scenario, where there is an act of what I consider violence by the pub-private property, or whatever the case may be, where they damaged that, isn't that breaking the law under that scenario what he just used?
Chairman, Supervisor Goodman, I'll take this one. So you have to understand it from a law enforcement perspective. So when we go into the situation, if we have a peaceful protest, and they're allowed to do that under the Constitution, we're going to allow that to happen. If they start violating laws, we're going to deal with those people that are violating those laws, not the group as a whole. So we're not going to say this whole demonstration is now not peaceful because this person or that person has violated the law. And typically speaking, that's how we deal with crowds. We take out the bad actors that are breaking the laws and allow the peaceful protests to continue because that's their First Amendment right. Now, if the group as a whole becomes riotous, or we give the order because we've deemed that this is no longer, does no longer, First Amendment no longer applies, then we have to give due warning, we have to let them know that it's no longer a peaceful protest, and then we take action from there. But when you get into that realm, we've kind of moved out of this. And again, with these, getting back to the core of this question, does it restrict us? No, it restricts the money associated with this grant. And it gives them the opportunity to take the money back.
Thank you.
Just real quick, and I'm just going to kind of throw out a scenario.
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's, if there is a protest, and there's a bad actor or actors, and you take them away, this whole thing would require litigation, judges, rulings, way down the line before, I mean, and all of a sudden they go, hey, you know what? You kind of violated that guy's rights there. The grant would probably be over by the time that got litigated. I'm just saying, this is, this, any situation like that would be long-term. Am I, am I correct? I mean, they're not going to come over the next day and say, hey, 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 we didn't like the way you did that.
I'll go first, and then I'll let my counterpart here go. Chairman, Supervisors, so yes, for us, we remove the bad actor, we enforce the law at that point. And then the justice system takes over from there, we're removed from it. And you have to understand that when we take that action at that point, it's what's reasonable, what a reasonable officer would do at that point, and that's what we're judged on. So they're going to look at the situation, all the dynamics involved, and what was reasonable at that time to determine the level of force used. And then it goes into the justice system, and yes, it can take a long, long time to get adjudicated.
And I also want to clarify, Chairman, that the contractual term in the underlying federal regulation that it's based on, it simply states as a term of the contract that the grant funding recipient has to have a policy that prohibits excessive force. It doesn't say that if anyone who works for the grant recipient is alleged or even found to have committed, you know, some type of act that constituted excessive force, that that's a breach of contract. It's simply, do you have a policy that prohibits your government actors from using excessive force against someone in a peaceful demonstration? And so as long as we have that policy there, if someone violated that policy, then there would probably be personnel actions that would happen in-house, there could be a Section 1983 lawsuit, it could even come to bear in any, you know, potential criminal penalties on either side.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, because that really is what it amounts to, is the policy. What's the policy of the sheriff's office in situations like this? And I'm sure you guys have been trained on that, I'm sure you understand it, and you know that was probably all part of the academy, if the truth be known.
Certainly. And in this particular agreement, as ELOY is the recipient, it would be, you know, does ELOY PD have policies that prohibit excessive force?
I can't, I can't imagine a law enforcement agency in the United States of America that doesn't have that policy.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Not to get too convoluted, but this is, this comes up a lot when you're talking about homeless and squatters and people living on sidewalks and in medians, et cetera. And they can't be removed unless there's no trespassing signs posted. Then it's no trespassing, you have to go. If there are peaceful protests on private property, let's say a grocery store parking lot or whatever, and the owners want them removed, what was peaceful could easily turn violent because they don't want to be removed, they don't want to have to move. I'm just wondering how that, see how it could escalate, you know, just by a simple thing of, don't stand here, go stand over there, I don't want to. You then try to move somebody, it gets violent, you know, zero to sixty, so.
Chairman, Supervisor, thirty, that is correct. And again, that, for us in the police officer world, that's why every situation is dealt with by what we have in front of us. And a lot of times when we're dealing with these crowds, we have legal counsel right there with us. When we know we're going to have protests or a protest has started, and we have a group, we have legal counsel either right on the phone or right there with us that we're conferring with, because it's a very fine line, right? And we do not want to violate our citizens' First Amendment rights, but at the same time, we also want, like the store owner in this case, they have rights as well, and we want those protected. So a lot of times, it's with counsel that we're deciding, okay, have we crossed lines that, that we're willing to go in there? And just by us showing up as a use of force, when we show up in uniform, that's considered a use of force in the court's eyes. So it's very calculated moves when we're dealing with protests and any situations involving crowds.
Thank you. Do you have another question?
Mr. Chairman, I have one final comment. I appreciate, this is not a voting item, this is a discussion item. I think it's important that we, as a board, examine in great detail the contracts we're signing, the entanglements with federal government, and as a team, determine if this is best for the citizens of the county, if it's constitutional to preserve freedom, and I know that's, you know, the thrust of your sheriff. And so I appreciate the opportunity to question you in public, and then we may discuss more terms of the contract that I recall, but I want to, I'll sit down with you and we'll go through those before, before we have a voting item. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Everybody good?
I just, if I could make another comment to that. And based on that conversation that you have with Supervisor Kavanaugh, I would ask that we all be copied on that information and things of that nature, questions that he's asking, and then the information that you're giving back, so that we could all be informed on what's taking place.
Chairman, Supervisor Goodman, absolutely. And I agree, this is good, open forum conversation, because it not only gives you an understanding of how we deal with stuff like this, because we have the federal grants and the contracts in front of us all the time, and I agree that we need to dive into those, because a lot of times, they attach things to these grants that can be restrictive for local government. So it's good to look at these and have a good, open conversation with all the departments affected to know what we're getting into.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and to your point, we may do things in our eyes, and the sheriff's office may do things in their eyes that are correct, and still draw a Department of Justice inquiry investigation 1983 claim, and that, the costs of outside counsel could exceed, in defense, could exceed the value of the grant. So that's another consideration.
I don't doubt. I mean, every day we get out of bed, we take a chance in this, in this arena. I mean, it's just the game we've chose. So is there any other comments, or?
Chief Shephard, Thomas, thank you very much. Attorney State, thank you for your presentation and information. Okay, I see Mr. Volkmar in the room, so I'm going to move to item number four, which is the work session, presentation and discussion of the results of the recent census and potential undercount. And this is, this, you know, just a side note, I've asked Mr. Sullivan, our county CSA director, to put this on a discussion for all the counties coming forth, because I think it, it really affects the entire state. Go ahead, thank you, Mr..
Kent Volkmar, County Attorney, Chair, members of the Board, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak. Essentially, what, I know a number of supervisors had received questions from their constituents, a number of county employees have been working behind the scenes. We wanted to update you as well as the community as to kind of where we sit right now. And then ultimately, at the end, I think we're going to be looking for some guidance from you as a collective board as to how we should proceed forward. I'm starting kind of at the most base level, I don't want to, to waste anybody's time, but I think we need to understand the true importance of the census. If I can figure this out, there we go. So it's every 10 years. It's used for the apportionment of congressional seats and the redistricting at the state level. I will tell you that that ship has already passed for those two points. All of our research, there is no ability for us to contest the census, get new census numbers, and to allow a new apportionment to come forward. We're not going to get that 10th congressional seat. It's not going to impact state level. So I think the important thing is that we sort of quell any misunderstandings or any, I guess, unrealistic expectations. Our challenge of the census is really for the following four things. And that's the allocation of federal dollars and the resources. And it's not just for the next year, it's for the next 10 years until the new census comes forward. Our census numbers are used to determine needs by the federal government for roads, hospitals, schools, public sector investments. Companies use these numbers, they use these federal surveys. We actually use them to create and implement emergency response plans, and money is allocated to develop those emergency response plans, not only at the federal level, but also at the state level. And then it also acts as the base for all additional federal surveys. So much like a house, if you have a garbage cornerstone, your house is going to crumble. You have to have a decent foundation. And our concern is, we believe that the census did not do Pinellas County a solid. In fact, they substantially undercounted, is what our belief is. And we're in the process of fully investigating that. So depending on the numbers you're looking at, we were anywhere from 10 on the low end of being shorted to as much as 20%, which is almost 80,000 residents. Again, I want to say that again just because of the sheer magnitude. It is possible that they undercounted as many as potentially 80,000 residents. So there are all these algorithms that are used to determine what we believe population, our population is. They involve taking into account the number of vehicles that are registered, the number of houses, the P.O. box, there's all of these different sort of cryptic mathematical formulas. You punch the numbers in, and then it says, okay, this is your estimated population. Our estimated population was between 465 and 490,000, give or take. And then the census came back at 425. There were some, what I would call anomalies. We had communities that showed, you know, that were in the midst of a boom that actually showed a decrease in population. We had communities that we believe should have maintained pretty much stable, who, again, showed a decrease in the actual number of people over the past 10 years. Anybody that's driven through Pinellas County, anybody that's seen the development, I think that that belies even a common sense approach. You know, we look at Casa Grande and some of our cities where there's houses going up left and right, even Maricopa, I know, I believe was undercounted according to what their estimates were. They're showing, again, what it was considered minimal growth when we were expecting exponential growth. And- And that is what triggered everything. That is, okay, our estimates here, the numbers come in and we started saying, hey, let's look at things. And that's why the county really got together and we worked with GIS. And, you know, there's a whole list of people that I want to just give a shout out to because there's been a lot of people that have put time into this. On the left are sort of the six sort of categories or pots that we found that we were very concerned with. The first is the application of the algorithm. I told you, there's this mathematical formula. What they do though, the census, is they figure out what the average people per household is, and they use that number to fill in the gap. So if you got on the internet and you responded and you said, you know, I have five people in my household, and I said, oh, there's five people in my household, great, no problem. If you didn't, you know, they would continue to send mailers. And if you responded via the mail, perfectly fine. If not, they were supposed to send out census people that would come out and actually just knock on the door. And then they're supposed to go two or three times, knock on your door, see if there's somebody there. If ultimately there was no response, then they use this algorithm. They say, okay, this house in this location, 2.9 people is the average. One of the things that we saw is the areas that tended to be significantly undercounted tended to be lower socioeconomic areas and areas that were predominantly non-English speakers. We don't know why, but that seems to be a very specific area that was undercounted. And one of the things that we discussed was the lower socioeconomic households tend to have more people in there because they end up being multi-generational so they can afford, especially during this boom where housing costs are so expensive. So using that 2.9 factor may have actually been inappropriate. That may work for the entire county as a whole, but it should be more regionalized. It should be more localized to say, what is it in this community? What is it in this subdivision, instead of using that generic number? The census taker inadequacy, inconsistency, we didn't get our own census takers. We got people from Tucson. And there were supposed to be 12, and we got, I believe, five. So tell me how five people, in the midst of COVID, were going to do the work of 12. I think human nature is there's going to be shortcuts. And I'm not faulting anybody, this is not designed to disparage or insult anybody, but ultimately there's going to have to be shortcuts, there's going to have to be guesses. There's just no way that five people can do the work of 12. It's just, it's not practical. The underrepresented undocumented population. So in the state of Arizona, they actually said we had like a 10% decrease in undocumented population. I see a supervisor laughing, but that was our same reaction. Again, that seems to be highly, highly, highly unlikely that in the past 10 years, we've actually seen a reduction. Ordinarily, urban communities are underrepresented. That is the historical, if you go back for the last four, five, six censuses. What we've discovered, and not us, but nationally, is the big urban populations have had the biggest undercount traditionally. That didn't happen here. And this count, Maricopa and Pima County were actually fairly close to their estimates. The only rural community that even came close was Yavapai County. Everybody else was substantially below. Again, 10-plus percent lower than what they're estimated. So for the first time in recent history, our rural communities were significantly undercounted. We also find ourselves in a unique cross-jurisdictional city position where we've got Apache Junction, we've got Queen Creek, Morana is starting to creep into our community, where we've got cities that essentially straddle two different jurisdictions. And our concern was during the opioid litigation and as we've discovered stuff, what they end up doing is they shift those to the biggest county. So all of AJ actually under those got counted with Maricopa County. All the people in Queen Creek got counted with Maricopa County. So it was something we wanted to look into to make sure that that didn't happen in this case. Again, I addressed the last one, the socio-economically disadvantaged locations and non-English speaking homes, those were the areas that were specifically undercounted. So we reached out to, you know, our AG's office, we reached out to a number of our fellow counties that we saw were dramatically undercounted. Yuma is a community that was incredibly undercounted as well. La Paz County, Greenlee County, essentially all of Southern Arizona was drastically undercounted. And we really wanted to see, hey, is, you know, are we crazy? Are you experiencing the same thing? And all of them uniformly said, yeah, something's not right. We're seeing the same sort of phenomenons of a 10-plus percent undercount. And then we gauged the interest of whether a challenge would make sense, whether we should unify forces, you know, is there strength in numbers, for example? Or should each individual entity sort of, you know, hold their own road, so to speak? I can tell you that other counties certainly expressed a willingness to contest. I know the AG's office was more than willing to sit down and further our conversations, but what we did is we actually met with a census consultant. So the census consultant, I don't want to name him at this point, but he is an attorney who's been involved in Arizona politics for quite some time in the redistricting process. He's not an Arizona resident, he's actually out of DC, but he was very, very accommodating. Mr. Keller and I had at least an hour phone call with him and it was a very candid and very frank conversation. And I will tell you his assessment, it was not good for us. Basically, he said that the county is going to have to get the federal government and all of their grandeur to say, my bad, we screwed up. And he said that is a monumental task. Part of the reason is if the federal government comes in and says, you know what, Arizona, or Pinal County, or anybody else, you're right. All those points that you made, you're absolutely right. Your algorithm argument, we should have been assessing more. That is not going to be unique to us. If we win, that means every other community potentially in the United States could have that exact same claim, which would essentially invalidate the entirety of the census. And he said that, that's a no-go. There's no, there's no way that the federal government is going to allow us, there was billions of dollars spent to essentially say, yeah, this is, you know, a bunch of hogwash and we're going to destroy it. So what he said, if you're going to win, you must distinguish yourself and it must be unique to you. He was very clear that coming together as a state would not help. Because again, it's that same argument. If Arizona was undercounted, then California was undercounted, and New Mexico, and Maine, and Washington, and everybody else. So he said, make it as narrow as you can. He says, as a county, that's fine, and you can bring municipalities within your county, but say, this is unique to us and it's unique to us for this very reason. I mean, we went through each one of those sort of six reasons, and he basically said, great point, you're absolutely right, doesn't amount to a hill of beans. Each one of those. Again, he was, he was very candid and he just said, look, it is an uphill battle and all of those things are likely true. The one thing, I take it back, he said the cross-jurisdictional cities, he said he'd be very surprised if we were wrong there. And I'll update what was on here. On Monday, we just had a phone call where that was not the issue. So we had somebody from the census that we did speak with, Steve Fraser, the head of RIT, was on there, and they do use the GIS points. So IT sends that to them and they are actually using where they're located. So there was not that, what I would call the opioid drift, we did not see the opioid drift. That's the only one, he said, hey, if you can prove that that happened, that's great, but I would be shocked. And it turned out that he was correct. So, I mean, the question that I think we had to ask is, are we out of luck? No. The long and short of it is we're not out of luck. There is a process that permits us to challenge the results of the census. It's called a CQR. It is not finalized yet. So there was a CQR process in 2010. There is the foundation that they're creating now, but much like we've come to expect from the federal government, they're behind. They're pushing their dates back further, but we do have confirmation that they do have the framework there. It's their intention to go forward with it. There will be the ability to, again, very narrowly, challenge why we are different than everybody else and why we were short-changed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ken, I know you're still, I know you're still laying everything out, but I just want to point out that we have three cities represented in the audience today. We've got Al from Apache Junction, and I think Heather from Queen Creek, and Ben from Florence. And I think a lot of other cities are watching us being streamed live, so they're looking for guidance too because they're going to follow what we say. So will you leave some time to get feedback from these other cities so that we know exactly? Because some of them are just now hearing it. And I know that in District One, Superior supposedly lost people. And I know a lot of people that are buying those properties up there. I know Somerton, which had a great influx of California people, they've supposedly lost people and it's just impossible. So I'm asking for guidance for the cities and I, I know we don't necessarily need to join with other counties, but let's do have all of our cities on the same page in the county, so.
Chair Supervisor Sertie, that's what we're hoping to get from you and asking direction from this board is essentially, I want to lay it out, but this is a discussion item. The county as a whole, you know, Mr. Lou, Homan Chu, Steve, all of us have been working on this. And at this point, we're just trying to gather information to present to you to figure out how this board would like us to move forward. So obviously, I'm happy to answer any questions, and this is set as a discussion agenda item. So other presenters can come to the board, they can present questions, and ultimately, we're going to follow the desire of the board. It's not what I want, it's not what Leo wants, it's not, it's what the board is directing us because this has to be a board-led issue.
Right. And thank you, Ken. And I think the thing, this is like the ground, this is ground level. This is to give everybody kind of an idea, because there's been a lot of questions surrounding about, well, let's do a recount. You've just pointed out, we're not getting, there's not going to be a recount. And the point that you made that make it unique, I think that's what we want everybody to understand. And we are willing to help any way we can our cities within our county, for sure. Don't hesitate to reach out to us. Go ahead, Ken.
So I want to make a correction up there. Excuse me. If you look about the third bulleted point, it said the period for challenging doesn't begin until October 1st. That changed as of Monday. So on the, on September 30th, there is a giant data dump. So they've given us the preliminary numbers, they've not given us the final numbers. On September 30th, that's not what I said, there's, all of that formal numbers are being dumped and we're going to get that information. Our IT team and GIS team is able to look at it. So originally, after that data is dumped, there was a period beginning October 1st where we could say, hey, we want to challenge. We want to do the CQR process. Just on Monday, we were advised, because the government is behind, because the process has not been formalized, they're now bumping that all the way to January 1st. So our window to challenge is a little bit longer, we do have more time now, but it's not until January 1st that we can even bring it. And then they open it for a full 18 months. So there is a very big window. Before, we were on much more of a time crunch, which is also part of the reason we wanted to get in here now. They've essentially given us an additional 90 days to continue to do our homework and to figure out what to go for. I'm trying to give the federal government the benefit of the doubt here, Supervisor. I see you smirking.
Just amazing.
So what I do want to say though is, we're not out of luck. So there's, I'm going to be generous and call this sort of interesting. So they reach out to our county well in advance of the census. And they say, we want a list of every single rooftop that you have in your community as of July 1st, 2018. Mind you, the census is effective April 1st, 2020. But they say on July 1st, 2018, we want your county to give us every rooftop we have. Now, we thought they stopped counting. We did learn that they don't stop counting, but they never come back to our county. They never ask our IT department, they never ask our assessor's office, they never ask anybody from the county for updated numbers. Instead, and I took some notes because this was based on our conversation Monday, they use the US Postal Service and post office boxes. It is a tool, it is not the only tool. The reason I bring this up though is what I'm trying to say is there's potentially some hope. Because, you know, I believe Steve Fraser, I think Steve's here, hopefully, if he's not, you know, Steve looked from the date that they stopped, the date that they provided houses on July 1st of 2018 until the census date, there were over 5,000 additional homes that were built in Pinal County. So.
Two and a half people per home.
Correct. Well, ours is 2.9 is our average, so that's 15,000 right off the bat. And we don't know, based on the post office, how many numbers were there. And that's part of those numbers that are getting dumped, we have to do all these comparisons. Okay, what do you have, what do we have? You know, they don't use certificates of occupancy, which I think would make common sense, but, you know, I don't run the federal government. But what our consultant told us is if we can show that entire areas were not counted, that's how you win. If there were a subdivision, for example, that was not properly counted, or there is an area that you can demonstrate that was woefully undercounted and you can give a reason why it was woefully undercounted, there is the ability for them to say, okay, we did screw up. You know, and Cherry, you alluded to this, I just, I want to caution everybody, even if we get them to say, yes, we undercounted you, it doesn't mean we get a recount. Then it essentially becomes, for lack of a better term, a negotiation of what number they're going to assign us. So, you know, what we're trying to do is put as big of a number out there that we can justify with actual facts. Because we were cautioned, if you, if you throw out a, you know, a theoretical wonderful number, if we say, we're at 510 thinking we're just going to negotiate and we can't back that up with facts, we're going to be dead in the water. They're not even going to consider it. But if we can demonstrate via equations, math, and actual facts, if we can show these, this is a number, and they accept that they undercounted, then there can be a negotiation. But ultimately, what they would say is, okay, we put you at 425, you say you're at 475 just for, you know, sake of argument, they could say, we're going to concede 25,000 but not more. We're going to say your number is 450. And they would assign that 450 moving forward. That is really the best-case scenario moving forward. What I will tell you that I found interesting, and this is just an observation, when we spoke with the gentleman from the census, he seemed quite optimistic that there was flexibility and the ability for us to challenge and get those numbers up. Our consultant was not whatsoever optimistic. He was actually very pessimistic and cautious. And I'm hoping the truth is somewhere in between, but the census taker said, look, we can make mistakes. And if we made mistakes and you can show us why, why we were mistaken and you can prove it and you can demonstrate it, you know, we would be willing to reconsider. So are we out of luck? I think the answer is no, we're not out of luck if we can demonstrate. So to the cities, you know, I would encourage the same thing to the cities. The cities would have to show, hey, in this area, there was an undercount. If there was, this entire community was missed, perhaps it's a, you know, a mobile home park or retirement park, and they thought, oh, those are all winter visitors so they don't count and they weren't included. Or they didn't, an entire addition to a subdivision, those are the type of things we're looking at. I mean, we found significant inconsistencies. I know Steve Fraser looked at a community called Colonial del Sol, which is technically in the county but very close to Casa Grande. Significant, 20% plus undercount. Stanfield, again, a community just south of Maricopa, 21 or 22% undercount, I think, is what we ended up finding based on the homes. So those are the things that we have to establish and say, you know, not just it's a 20%, this is how we determined it, these are the real numbers, this is how you made them, I can't say you made a mistake, but this is how the mistake was made. Because if we, you know, go too far and push too much, the federal government is just going to say we're not taking it. So we're stuck in this very, what I would call a dance with them, where we have to sort of say, you know, I think you guys just missed this. Not you're flat out wrong, you know, lawsuits are not the answer. I can tell you, the consultant said it would, you would waste untold hundreds of thousands of dollars and get absolutely zero through a federal lawsuit. The CQR is our own, only really possible recourse. I don't know, is Steve here?
He's not, I don't see him.
So the reason I was hoping Steve was going to be able to be here is, his GIS team has done a ton of work and they actually have every house that's dotted on the GIS, so it's there. They know where everyone's at. And the federal government gives these just giant data dumps, and his team has been going through. So we have the temporary dump, we don't have the permanent, but the temporary and the permanent are pretty close, and they've already been working on it. And he's the one that, the 20% in Colonial del Sol, the 21% in Stanfield, those all, that comes from him, him and his team. So what we have to do is, once we get those permanent numbers, we have to figure out, what did we give them? Because this is the crazy part about when we give them those numbers. After we provide them on July 1st of 2018, we have to destroy what we gave them. They don't allow us to keep it. So we have to recreate it, compare it to what they're giving us in the final numbers, look with the post office and see where the gap is to see where those shortcomings are. I don't know, is Angie here? Man, I didn't do a good job of bringing all my support. Steve's coming? Okay. Steve's coming on his way. I know that, okay, I do have Angie, sorry. Maybe. I'll keep going until he gets here. If we proceed forward, if we do the CQR, it is going to cost some financial resources. We do not have the internal expertise to wade through this murky water. You know, there's a large debate about the federal governments and all the hoops and requirements and everything they do. This is a particularly specialized area that no one on my team, and I certainly don't have that specific expertise. If we were to pursue doing the CQR, it would be my strong, strong, strong recommendation that we do bring a consultant in who's been through this, who understands this, who can help us sort of navigate what is good, what is not. Because again, if you go back to those six things, I thought those were beautiful answers. I would be happy to stand up, I would file the suit and argue to every one of those and really felt confident in myself. And then we'd have got shut down and wasted all those time and resources. And then we'd have got shut down and wasted all those time and resources. The consultant was able to say, look, historically, no, 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 if that works, great, no, no, here's where you need to do it.
Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. I, I know you're, you're, you're going on to take some time, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I heard of an issue where the data is not necessarily assigned to a census tract, but it may be assigned to another one, even in another county, in order to preserve data. Does that sound familiar to you? And if not, Josh explained it to me, and maybe he can give it, or Tammy, or whomever.
I do not have the expertise on that. I would step aside and allow somebody, perhaps with a little more information, to answer that.
We'll let Tammy dive into that. Oh, boy.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, my name is Tammy Ryle, and I'm staff with Pinal County. I believe the issue that you're referring to is the, the preferential differentiation, and we're very concerned about that. Can I stand up here and tell you exactly that we know exactly how it's going to work? I don't think that we can. I can explain how it was explained to me by the Census Bureau, so, and how it was explained to me by the demographer at MAG. So, because there's so much commercially available information out there on all of us, it makes people that live in rural areas where maybe the densities are less, a little easier to identify. The census is under a mandate to keep all of our census information anonymous. So, the way they've reconciled to not have you be able to be connected to this commercially available data, to your census data, is that they're taking at the census block level, so at the smallest level of the census, and they're substituting for other census blocks. So, let's use an example from your district. So, I live in Mammoth. I am easily identifiable, because I live in a less dense area because of commercially available data. They may substitute a census block from over, say, in Maricopa, so that then it wouldn't be identifiable. So, they've, they call it noi, data noise, but they're essentially inserting these data errors at the block level to prevent people's personal information from being linked to commercially available data. The questions that I cannot answer, that were raised the biggest amount of concern for us, is when they do these substitutions, are the substitutions recognizing and substituting blocks that are of a similar demographic characteristic? We don't know if, because, you know, different parts of the county have very different demographics. We don't know. We don't know how reliable that block later, data is going to be. And it has a particular impact on us, because, you know, at the congressional and the legislative, you know, at those levels, they don't use block-level data when they do their redistricting. But when we do our redistricting, and we're looking at how we're not impacting those DOJ special characteristic groups, we have to look at block-level data. So, as we go forward in this process, part of the learning curve is going to be learning more and more and more about how that is going to affect us. But I do know, to throw out anecdotal information, that every demographer that I've talked to in this state is very concerned about it, is very up in arms about it, that it's, they're just really concerned of this policy of introducing intentional errors, and what the ramifications are going to be, and the, it's really an unknown.
Wow.
Did that answer your question?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You, you did, and, and I might add, I'm looking at a copy of the census form, and you have the name of the person, you know, that you, and then, then there's, it looks like a number of pages of questions, how is this person related, opposite sex, husband, wife, biological sign, you know, so, we, and I'm, I'm, the Constitution says we're to enumerate the persons every 10 years, and then the, our federal government, the Census Bureau, has added all these other things. And I think we may have got some census hesitancy, because this is almost like an IRS form you're filling out, rather than saying, this is my address, and how many people are in my house, and we're done with it. And, and because we asked so many questions, now we have to hide the data so that commercially-available sources can't match it up. If we were doing our constitutional duty, Mr. Chairman, we would simply count the people, and we wouldn't have had that issue. So, it's a bigger, it's a bigger problem than, than we can solve here today. But I wanted to add that comment, that I think we were, I think people see this form and, and say, no, I'm not going to answer it. I guess it is one page per person, but there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of questions about race and so on. And, and, you know, I appreciate the work you've done, Mr. Ryle, on this issue, and we've discussed this a great deal, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
I see that Mr. Frazier's come in, so...
Yeah, if you want to bring him up here and let him explain this portion of the process.
Chairman, forgive me, dealing with a little issue over there. Questions?
You were going to explain, Ken, what was...
Let me tell you what you're talking about. So, yeah, after, well, let me roll back a little bit here, probably my, my third census with the county. Really, the data we're going to get by December 30th, in other words, that block-level data, what's been released so far is, is kind of the, the summary of the data, if you will. They've got it, they just haven't released it yet. Once we get that, you know, we, we can start doing some analysis, and, and as Tammy kind of went into, it, it doesn't help us that it's aggregated data. In other words, when, when you start lumping things together, it's just this many people, they can't, in other words, we're not going to see the points what they counted, we're not going to see the, any of that. But some of the work we can do within the team is actually look at, what is the count reported by the census in that particular block? We know the addresses that we have provided census for that count. And since then, we're, we'll, we'll look, and, and off of a call the other day, we can probably see their full housing count within there. And with that, using some of the, the census's own information, in other words, kind of average persons per household, we can start to kind of see what the outliers are, see if there, there's, we've already seen in kind of checking a couple of blocks that appear to be, at first glance, undercounted. And I can, I can tell you from experience, after being through this a couple times, if you roll back to 2010, if you recall, at that time, SB 1070 was happening. We kind of knew then, as a county, that that is going to affect our count, and, and, and believe it did. You, you rolled a, rolled a present day, not an SB 1070, but, but still some, some unease, I think, out there. You know, in, in my gut, I can probably say that there's some, probably some, some largely Hispanic communities that are undercounted. But again, really proving that, as, as, you know, we, we talk about the challenge, is going to be tough, but it, but I think we've got to look at it, block by block, and do some calculations, just to see how far it's, how far it's out. And then it plays into that vacancy rates and things like that in those areas, once, once we're there. So, brief synopsis of kind of, you know, where we're going. And again, as a group, we just kind of decided, let's, let's look and see if we can find that silver bullet. I think all of us kind of know it's lower than what we expected. Proving it is going to be tough. So, I'll just say that right out of the gate.
You know, this is just a, a thought, observation, I guess, you know, it would be simpler if you just, if you just found like a whole subdivision they entirely missed.
Right.
Wow, that's pretty easy.
Yeah.
But if it's just spread like peanut butter across everything, and you're just trying to, to analyze every little nook and cranny, that would be very, very difficult to try and put a, a, you know, a case together, or...
Sure.
Here's our, here's why we think we're undercounted, that would be a lot more difficult, absolutely.
True. And, and we're, we're going through block by block, too, seeing what group quarters were within that block. I mean, right around Florence here, naturally, there's, there's several, making sure the ones that they had in there, you know, make sense, make sure the, make sure, number one, that there's group quarters in there, and that there, that there's a count for it. So, yeah, it will, but that's why I think we'll just have to look and probably do some initial calculations to really see, hey, these five really jump out at us. I think we'll probably, in, in my gut, there's probably going to be a region where these enumerators, where we were intended, supposed to have 12, and only had five. And you've read the article of the paper, I mean, logistically, in my mind, I don't see how they could have gotten all those addresses.
Right.
But I think we'll just have to see these outliers, and then from there, dig in a little further to see if there's some other piece of data somewhere that we can put together and actually prove there's an undercount there.
Right.
But, that's...
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Frazier, do we have an actual statistician in the county? Employed by the county?
What, one of my staff is, is trained in statistics, but, but as, as a, as a profession, probably public works, or, I mean, public health may have more of a data analyst statistician, but not on staff in my, in my shop. But, that's essentially, and again, the, the resource I'm talking about is one of the, one of my GIS resources that we use on this.
Okay. Would, you think it'd be wise to us to consider a consultant statistician or adding one? I know that Supervisor McClure, early on, talked about a, a person who would handle some of these, some of the roles for the Board of Supervisors, and examining data and so on. And that's maybe something we need to talk about.
My opinion, not until we can, once we get the data, we're going to know a lot more. So, so by the end of this month, we're supposed to have that block-level data. I, I think if some things really start standing out, maybe, but, but with census, we have got to provide them, here is, we, we know you're, you know, we're undercounted in these 10 blocks, or whatever it may be, there's a whole bunch of blocks. And here's why. From there, I, I don't know...
How would you go about, if you, if you know that there's a neighborhood that's undercounted, appears to be, how would you go about tackling that?
First of all, I would try and use their, well, I would try and use their own data for the argument. In other words, looking at the vacancy rate within that area, the, the count, the addresses we gave them, the addresses they're supposed to get between July 13th of 2018, which is when we handed them our, our address data, and census day 20, 2020. They use a couple of resources, either canvassing or United States Postal Service, to get up, and they, they call it the new construction update. We know, we didn't give it to them, so they had to have gotten it from those sources, but, but we know exactly from that date to census day, exactly how many are there. And I think we've just got to see that enough of a difference to start digging into it, and then start looking at the vacancy rate, and what was reported in there, and then, then go down to kind of institutional knowledge. Are, are these, are these vacant, are, you know, maybe, maybe utility data or something like that can tell us that there is people living there at that time? That, that's, that's why I said, it's very hard to prove beyond reasonable power, or whatever, that it was done, and you're, we're going on a lot off of gut here.
So, Steve, you just, you just mentioned, hi, you just mentioned utility data, so you would go back to the utility, to the, to the usage at that time, not present? I mean, you have, you have forensic, forensic study, okay?
I, I, and, and again, a source for that, we've got some partners through utilities that possibly we can get that. That's just one idea, that, you know, if it got to that point where we've got these big outliers, that we really feel are undercounted, how do we prove people were there? And, and that's what census really needs to, to start changing any count, as I, as I understand it.
Supervisor Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in hearing your conversation and the discussion that's been going on, you alluded to the, the post office being a part of, of what they use their numbers from. And right there in Santan Valley, there's two zip codes that are identified as Queen Creek, 85142, and 85140, my own, that perhaps there was some misinformation that was given there through the post office, that should have been an unincorporated area, but Queen Creek was probably, could have been assessed those.
Right. We're told, I asked that specific question on a call a day or two ago with census. One of the reasons census is done now, early on with GIS, is, is we actually give them address points, which are, are spatially tied to that location on earth. So, I wanted to make sure, and I asked the question to make sure they're using the, the inherent properties of the address points in the GIS environment that we give them, and not just using city name out of an address. And they confirm that they use, that's purpose of GIS points, is, is we can distinguish that, because now, now you can, it's definitive whether or not it's in the town of Queen Creek or unincorporated Pinal County.
But back, if I might, but back to your point about the GIS, the pinpointing that you're talking about, we gave them the information in 2018, and by 2020, all those had changed substantially because of all the construction and everything else in the, that took place within the Santan Valley area between 2018 and 2000, or 2020. So, yeah, there could be some discrepancies based on what you're saying, based on that alone.
That's why we've got to put all of those pieces together.
Right.
Chairman Supervisor Goodman, we know, we, we've kind of already ran this and got this from Development Services, from July 13th of, of 2018, when we handed over, did our last address update to them, to census day 2020, 5,000 completed final inspection residential structures. So, you know, that's the 5,000, did they get that information from the post op, you know what I mean? Are they, are they in their counts, and their housing counts should reflect that? That's what I'm saying, we look at that housing count, population, start doing a, a little bit, and it's actually very simple math from there, persons per household on average for the county is 2.8. So, you couldn't...
Steve, you, you talk about these addresses, and this, is, does every city do that to the census as well? I mean, in other words, so that was done, we do it, they do it, everybody, they're not relying on us to do the city stuff, the city does their own?
Not directly, of course, we, we keep all of the city and county data for, for 911. And so, we constantly work throughout the years with cities and towns to make sure things are in the right jurisdiction when there's an annexation or something like that. But each city was, was responsible, city and town was responsible for submitting their own, with the exception of when we went into census this year, the town of Superior and the town of Mammoth didn't have a GIS resource. We had all of their addresses, so we got permission to submit for them.
For them, okay, okay.
So, but all, all of the others submitted on their own.
Good. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this time?
Just, if I might, just to, just to say that I appreciate everything that you're doing to echo what Supervisor Kavanaugh said. Tammy, we really appreciate you and all the other staff that's been moving forward on this, and this is something that I think that we need to get as close as we can to what those numbers are.
We're, we're going to look for the needle. All right. Thank you.
Tammy, Attorney Volkmar. Thank you, Chair. The reason I wanted Steve to come up, though, is, is I, I think the board, I think the public, I think our cities need to know how minutia, how into the minutia we have to get, how into the, the very details. Because my next slide talks about, it's, we potentially could be expending thousands of hours of staff time. You know, obviously, every minute that staff uses on one thing is something we're not using on another. It's a limited resource that we have. That's part of the reason we wanted to bring it before the board, to see if this is something, before Steve goes and commits, you know, half of his GIS team to, to look at individual block-level data, is this something that the board is interested in pursuing? If the board ultimately just says, look, our, our chances are too slim, and the resources aren't worth it, we're going to stop essentially using those limited resources. The one thing I kind of want to just conclude with, though, the census tells us at the state level that each person undercounted is worth about $3,000 per year. So, that is what the census tells us, at, at the state level, when you figure all the various numbers. We're still in the process of trying to figure out what it is at the county level for each person. But again, when we're talking 40,000, 50,000, 70, 80,000 people at $3,000 per year, you know, you're in the tens of, of millions of dollars, that money's not coming in, that's resources we're not getting, that's roads that we're not getting, that's hospitals and other resources that aren't coming in. So, the question really before the board is, I, I think the board, I, I think my obligation as legal counsel is to, to caution the board that our chances of winning is not great. I, I can't tell you, we've got a better than 50% chance of winning. I cannot, in good conscience, with what we have right now, give you that, that assurance. Once we get more data, I think we can do a better analysis, but right now, I think it would be unfair to characterize this anything other than a long shot. However, if we're successful, the, the winning, the proceeds, if you will, are so exponentially helpful to our community, to our state, and to everybody else, that's a decision the board has to make. Is it worth gambling, essentially? Is it worth risking limited resources because the payout's great enough? And that's really what we're here today asking the board.
It's called return on investment.
Yes, sir.
Because whether we invest the time... Because whether we invest the time to, to, to understand this and, and, and where's the break even point, where's the, um, uh, the benefit, or maybe not even benefit being the minus, if you look at the hours spent and the dollars spent.
Supervisor Goodman?
But to Supervisor Kavanaugh's point that he made earlier, about the complexity that our federal government has actually put on this mandate, you know, anytime, and I've always known this board to be, where, where we felt there was some injustice being done, we always push back, and it may come down to something along those lines, where we've gotta make a change, we, we recognize there's gotta be a change made, and unless we take a stand at some point, we as this group or anybody for that matter, we're not gonna get the change that's necessary. So, as we continue to go down this, because I think the, you, you're still some more information that we need to gather, but to Supervisor Kavanaugh's point, with that change, it's gotta be initiated by a group of people to help force and, and get that change. So, with that being said, that's, that's all I have to say at this point.
I think Supervisor Goodman should lead that charge.
I'm in.
We're sending you to Washington. You'll straighten them out. Anything?
Chair, I would just conclude, you know, you can read what's on the slide, but essentially, if, um, this board's direction is to proceed forward, I think it needs to be locally led, I don't think we should join with other counties. Uh, our counties are great, we certainly can work with them, but we should not join forces, it should not be a joint, um, motion. I think, my opinion or recommendation is we should work with our cities, um, particularly those cities that have the, the individual GIS data that we can work together to present that, that why Penal County as a whole was treated different, I don't think we should expand it beyond our cities though. Um, and again, remember, a win for us is just getting the number up, uh, and, and I think that's the important part, setting expectations.
What is, what is the deadline?
Technically, the deadline is now all the way till, I believe, June 30th of 2023, because we can't even begin to challenge until January 1st of 2022, and there's an 18-month window for us to be able to challenge. Um, unless necessary, I don't think we want to wait towards the end, because we want that number set earlier, because that, every year is, it's, you know, our federal funding, our pass-through money, the state uses, the federal government uses, the sooner we can get a correction, the better. Obviously, we don't want to rush it and, and shorten ourselves those numbers, but if we wait full 18 months, we potentially lose a year, a year and a half of funding that we should be entitled to.
So you're saying between now and the, the, the end of the year, first of the year, uh, we can start crunching these numbers and we will see if we really have a case by then?
Chair, my recommendation would be if the board wants us to continue this, just give us the direction, say yes, keep working towards it, and then set an agenda item perhaps in maybe December, early December, on a board, and we can do another update, this is where it's at. I believe Steve and his GIS team will have more information, we can talk about what it really is. I mean, that will, we will be expending county resources in the meantime, um, but the actual formal challenge wouldn't have occurred, and then we, I think we're probably gonna need an actual board agenda item to say yes, follow it, or excuse me, file that action. And again, if we need more time, we can obviously update the board, we need more time, but I, I would think coming back in, in December, kind of updating the board makes the most sense, unless the board would like an update in the interim.
Mr. Chair.
So, let me just, real quick, this is a, this is for discussion, can we give this, can we give direction? We can't give direction, that's what I'm thinking, but, but, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what I think Kent's alluding to is that we're gonna continue to go vet the process as we described it so far, and then come back to you with whether or not we feel that there is a case to be made. And just to clarify, it's an administrative case, uh, on the count, it's not a court case that's gonna be filed, that would be filed. It's an administrative procedure that we are waiting for the rules, for the federal government to set those rules as to what you need to file, when you need to file it, what forms, are there gonna be requirements and the like? So we're waiting for those to come out, and that's what census told us, they're in the process of drafting and pulling those together now. Uh, so we will know better, probably in another month, two months, once we start seeing what data are they gonna accept, what kind of format do they want it, and so forth. So I think at this point in time, Kent wanted to brief the board, uh, and he saw, as far as asking for direction is, we're gonna have to come back to you at some point in time, uh, after we have more, to get official direction from the board, move forward, don't move forward, and what is your best case scenario, but it was all educational and work session at this point.
Over to another report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Supervisor. I, I know we have a CSA rep in the audience, and I would hope that they are monitoring and communicating with NACO, the National, to see what other counties are doing, maybe 20 counties across the country look into it, maybe three or four have success, maybe we can copy their success, maybe they've got some things that we're overlooking, and so if you guys could, uh, be on board with that, I think that would be helpful.
We'll bring that up tomorrow. Any questions or comments? Supervisor?
Perhaps for Tammy, do we have a copy of the, the algorithms and that they used, and all their, all their, the data that they used and the formulas to, to arrive at these?
No.
No?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, not that I know of. I think we're gonna have to probably, on a lot of the analysis of that portion of our concern, we're gonna have to rely on, um, MAG has probably one of the best demographers in the state, a guy by the name of Scott Wilkin, and we have been in, um, communicating with him, and then we are a MAG, a member of MAG as well, they have an entire committee called PopTAC that just discusses these types of issues, so we'll continue to kind of raise these issues with them. So, and I wanted to call attention, um, we have a number of people that are here from our member communities, and we also, Senator Leach was here as well, he had to leave because of a prior commitment, um, and then also Eloy and Florence were here and left as well, but there are other communities that are here in the audience.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I just urge everybody, all the cities and towns to, um, you know, if we can help you in any way, and you have more questions, we certainly are a resource. Sir, did you have? You wanna come forth to me? Yeah, Micah.
Morning, Chairman.
Good morning. The mayor, Paul, sorry.
Mayor, yeah. Um, my name is Micah Powell, the mayor of the city of Eloy, and I think this is very important for us as a small rural community. Um, and I just went back, and our census in 2019 was at 18,600, and at this newest one, it came into at 15,600. So, it means a loss of revenue of about, over a million dollars just for us on top of the loss of numbers of our residents. We feel that the, um, the block counting, with our prisons, we have four prisons over there, weren't adequately counted as well. Also, our Hispanic, our low-income area, um, and we feel that we did a great job of campaigning for the census. So when we got these numbers, it was really troubling for us on how low they were. We're okay with being around the 18,000, 19,000, because we do have some, some residents that moved in, but we feel that it's important that we have this opportunity with the, the county, other communities if they're getting involved, and the county attorney to, to move forward on this, it's very important for us as a small rural community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and like I said, we're, we're available as a resource for you going forward.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anything else? Any other questions, comments?
Chair, if I could briefly, I just want to give a shout out, I put some names up there, James and Tammy and Leo Montrose, Steve Frazier, I, I know, Chair, you've been in part of these conversations, Chris has been there, Angie Tanya, there's a lot of people working behind the scenes, so I was the one that was sort of volunteered to come up here and chat, but there's been a number of people that have really been kind of busting their hump, because this is the first time we've really dealt with a number of these issues. So I, I just want you to know, I want the cities to know, and, and I want, you know, those county employees to know that we do appreciate their work, because they're the ones doing the lion's share. We come up and talk, but it's the people behind us that are doing 99% of the work. So I just want to acknowledge all the people that have been, been meeting, and, um, it's helpful, it's helpful for us to be able to present this information, and I just want to know that they're appreciated. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
I have a final comment, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
The statisticians and the census folks can make these kinds of errors on the census, but when we go to pay our taxes, they don't make these kind of errors, you know?
They're quick to point that out, aren't they? That's true. So, you know, and I, this whole thing, there's, you know, I think that the online, the, you know, the, the non-English speaking communities, I just think there was a whole nest of things that really has, uh, complicated this, this thing this year, so. Anyway, well, thank you, um, County Attorney Volkmer, and we'll move on to the next item, which is the presentation of, um, expanding our, uh, broadband. I think Tammy's doing that. And thank you to all the cities that participated and, and took in this information today.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Tammy Ryle, and today we're gonna talk about broadband. Before we get going, I kind of wanted to throw out there where we're at with broadband. Um, you know, those of you that have heard me talk before know that one of my favorite quotes is Abraham Lincoln, who once said that if you gave me six hours to cut down a tree, I would spend the first four sharpening the axe, and that analogy really applies with what's happened with our broadband efforts. We've been working on this for months, but it's at the grant proposal level. So the data that we're presenting is, we really went forward to come up with a proof of concept before, to get a really good handle on the numbers and how, what would work for us before we even got the funding. So, if there's questions, and you'll see at the end of the presentation, I have a list of, there's a lot of future questions that we still have to answer, that we may not have answers for everything today, but we want to talk to you about what we've come up with and the idea and the plan of what we can do. And so with that, I'll advance this. Alright, so the outline for today is really, I'm gonna kind of do introductions, we're gonna go through the process of analysis that we use to kind of arrive at where we're at, we're gonna talk about our proposed solution, and then we have lots of maps, we have more maps than you would ever want, but we have lots of maps, and then talk about the estimated delivery timeframe. When Leo kind of asked me to do this, my first reaction was that it, it's really hard, it was very hard to do. But, I have to report that it actually turned out to be a phenomenal experience, because we have this fantastic team that we've been working with, and so I want to introduce the team that's here, and they can answer the more technical questions, and then I'm also gonna bring up one of the team members to tag-team the presentation, because, um, he has a much better technical perspective than I do. So, looking at the team, so first off is Colin, he's gonna be my co-presenter, and then there's Peter Lynn, and Peter Lynn is a, actually an county employee, works for the school superintendent's office and a tremendous res, resource for us, and then, where's Darren? And then Darren is one of the, uh, executive VPs for OneTel, who's one of our partners in working for, through this. So, with that, let me get caught up, so these are the companies we've been working with, and the, their role will become explained very clearly soon. Okay, where we started with this, when Leo tasked me with it, is really with the problem, and what is the problem? And I think it's kind of an obvious statement to make that many parts of the county currently don't have adequate internet service, and what that means for us is, you know, students and their needs for remote learning, especially in these days of the plague, you know, they're falling behind. As an anecdotal example, um, we were speaking to the, um, chief of the Oracle Fire District, and they don't even have enough juice to do a Zoom call. And that's just in 2021, I think, unacceptable. I think it's unacceptable that our kids don't have the same access that people that are in an urban area, and that they're falling behind. We also looked at the current needs of our local businesses, because this impacts businesses, it affects, I mentioned the, the Fire District, but it affects the government agencies that are out in this area as well, and we want to reflect their needs and what we do in our solution. I think with the change also, uh, in post-COVID, um, we're seeing an increase in the availability of telemedicine options, and it would be nice for our, our folks that live in a more remote area that maybe doesn't have a hospital or a community health center, to have access to telemedicine as an option for them. And then also, and this is something I know is very near and dear to all your hearts, is that we need to have adequate infrastructure to really help us with economic development. And I think, you know, as you look at power infrastructure or water infrastructure, I would make an argument that your digital infrastructure is equally important to a lot of these businesses that are looking at prospective locations to move to. So kind of what I feel was the Penal County response to the problem is, it's not acceptable, and that you tasked us with going and sorting it out, and one of the, the messages that I received also very clearly is that we needed a pragmatic solution, that we needed to come up with something that we could do now, not something that's more pie in the sky that requires another five years of waiting. And then we were also asked to research all of the grant funding sources out there to see if we could get some money to help us with this. So, I'm gonna call up Colin now, but I'm gonna hover very close, and I've threatened him that I'm gonna roll up my papers, and if he starts using acronyms or he goes into nerd speak, I promise that I will strike him. So he has been threatened, but he'll start off at this point, and I'll hover right here.
Thank you, and she's made good on that threat before, so I, I know it's just right here. But one of the things that, and thank you all for the opportunity to come and present, uh, one of the things that's really optimistic about this is this, this map that you're looking at right here, this is actually the completion of a fiber project from June 2021. So, this was kind of how we all got to know Penal County, um, it was about four years ago that we started, um, the bidding, designing, and construction of this, this network. So Zayo, um, is the company that built that network, and it, it's probably likely that nobody has ever heard of Zayo before, and one of the reasons for that is because they're, they're the back-end infrastructure for, provider for some of the largest companies, Amazon, Netflix. This is a purpose-built network for, for large capacity bandwidth. So one of the great things about what we're gonna kind of propose here is that the most difficult and time-consuming part of delivering on this network is already done, is building the fiber into the hard-to-reach communities. And, uh, just big thanks to Peter who spearheaded that for the past four years, and kind of the, the monumental task of, of doing that project. So, the, the hardest part is done, is like, how do we get connectivity, um, and internet out of the remote towns that's already there? So, in kind of like the next step is like, i- it's very expensive to construct fiber, especially when you're doing underground construction, um, and in following through on an idea to deliver connectivity to students in their homes, you really kind of had to map that out. So, so Peter primarily led out with districts and gathering this data of where are all these students at throughout the county. Um, and wi, with that data, we were able to use pretty sophisticated software tools to estimate, um, what type of solution would be best, and where we kind of landed was a wireless solution. So one of the reasons why wireless today might not work as well in some of these communities is because the wireless carriers don't have a good way to get out of town, you know, they're still relying on old infrastructure, copper infrastructure, and so now, with this new fiber infrastructure, we're able to take next-generation technology, so 5G that we all keep hearing about, we're able to really enable that and hook up these towers. So kind of in this map, you'll see little dots, and those are potential student sites. You'll see kind of this blue, uh, line, that's the fiber going through the town, and then you can kind of see these, uh, little hexagons, and that's where we would place towers, um, to be able to, to service those students. So, with all the data that we collected, we came that a, a, a new wireless technology would be best suited to do that. And really, our, our proposed solution is, is one where, you know, we can allow a student to essentially roam the entire county and receive, uh, this connectivity. So, like, the, the potential for partnerships becomes really exciting with colleges. for partnerships becomes really exciting with colleges and just students in general. So we've landed on 35 different towers throughout the county that would really support that. One other thing that I'd mention briefly is, there's a real kind of regulated part of this that has made it difficult in the past. So spectrum that allows the wireless technology to operate is auctioned by the FCC and can be very, very expensive to acquire. And really, you just have kind of the big three, AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, that have access to that. But in the recent round of regulation that happened, there's a specific spectrum that's available to use that we don't have to pay for. And that's what that acronym is there. It's CBRS. So we're able to use that and really put it to good work. Another thing about this is just that this is all county, really county-owned infrastructure. So another kind of challenge that has happened historically is, for the economics to work for internet delivery, you have a lot of community-based networks, you know, where you have one provider that's going to service residential, commercial, government. And so when we built out this network in the same fashion that we've built the same networks for Amazon or for Microsoft, is that it's dedicated to you. So that's, and Peter can speak to that as well, just at how you get to do whatever you want with it, and there's no congestion on it. So when we build these up, there's a lot of capacity for it. And this is kind of how it looks. Everything from the county office to the districts is complete. Really, all we need to do, and why it would only take about six months, is to build a tower, to source the equipment, and to hook it up. And then really, students are able to access it in many cases, just with devices that go on to Chromebooks or to other laptops that they have. And it's pretty simple that way, but pretty powerful at the same time. We came up with some estimated costs for this. You know, to do the entire county was about this $8.8 million number, and about six months to do it. But really, kind of where we've wanted to focus is more of a pilot of like, we can go out and we can do something quickly for the most atneed portion of the county for $2 million. And that's kind of this highlighted section right here that we're calling the Copper Corridor, is let's go out to Superior, Kearney, San Manuel, and get these set up and working so that, one, they can do a proof of concept for us, but also to solve some of the most atneed connectivity requirements. And then kind of going on, there's some kind of upfront brains of the network that we have to build out that's included in that. And so that's kind of why, you know, the $2 million investment is for this Copper Corridor. But then right after that, you can really leverage it by doing the remaining, you know, 28 towers throughout the county. There's a lot of discovery that still needs to happen, but that's not necessarily necessary. But as far as like partnerships, the county does have access to certain towers. So if there are areas where we can partner with the county to put the equipment on existing towers, that saves money and different things like that. But we have done a pretty good amount of research on that already with the county. Yeah.
Another key aspect about the tower locations is we anticipate putting the towers either on our property or school property that will help us achieve that six-month window by reducing the amount of permitting that we have to do. So we're kind of anticipating that to the level that we can control it on our own property, because we have public workshards everywhere. So I make the joke with Andy that every public workyard is going to have its own tower now.
And just speaking to kind of like, what's the rush on this? So even though that unlicensed spectrum is free, there is a component of only so many operators can use it at a given time. So it is kind of like, first one to register it and use it, the better. And we kind of just put some news clippings over here just to kind of drive home what big business the spectrum is itself. And Peter can share stories about, you know, how the FCC in the past has designated certain spectrum specifically for schools. It was called the Education Broadband Spectrum, and that kind of wasn't used and got leased by Sprint and got taken up. And when we needed to use it, we couldn't use it, kind of a thing. So now I think that at-home learning is so important, there's kind of a different vision for how to use these spectrums and make sure that they're in the county's control so that you can use them how you need them. Great.
So I thought I'd highlight what we still have to talk about on this slide. But I'd also like to make a pitch going back. You know, this slide is the most important slide out there. So 8.8 million in six months. And then we'd like the county to pay for the $2 million to do the Copper Corridor. In addition to that, allowing us to move the most need forward, it also shows a good local commitment. When we're doing grant applications for outside funding, they always want to see that there is, that the local jurisdiction is willing to help pay for it. But in talking to Leo, you know, these expenditures qualify for what the intended purpose was of our COVID money that we received. So I can't think just personally of, you know, more that we could do for actually improving the quality of life of our community than fixing the internet for those rural areas. So the $2 million is just kind of what we talked about. If you wanted to do more, you could do more. But we anticipate there's some money becoming available through a competitive process starting in October through the Arizona Commerce Authority that will apply for. So we'll, and we still have a number, we have four earmarks that are still kind of moving through the federal process. But who knows how long that's going to take. But it's, the clock's ticking on getting this broad, getting this spectrum. That's my only concern, is when we wait for everything to be grant-funded, especially if we're waiting for it to be federally grant-funded, you know, we may miss the opportunity to get that free, unlicensed spectrum.
Tammy, just a quick question. Isn't that the more difficult area to get done? We'll start with the hard stuff, and then we'll, the easy stuff will be easy. But let's get this area that is going to be the most challenging. I mean, I'm sure line of sight and all those different things are, there's a multitude of things that we have to really evaluate up there. But let's, I agree, I think we should take that area first.
And I'm so glad that you brought that up, because when we started out as a team, that was the first thing that was one of our guiding principles, is that rather than do, because you know, the industry may solve some of our other areas, but let's go do what's the hardest first and the easier stuff last. But instead of just cherry picking, so that's why the Copper Corridor, it's the most difficult in terrain, it's the most difficult in density, it's the one that's least likely to have a private sector solution come in. So kind of transitioning to this slide on topics for future discussion, I think we're going to have to have a session where we talk about what our administrative framework is going to be, because we're going to own the towers. So we're going to have cost recovery ability, we're going to have all these different opportunities associated with those towers. But we need to talk a little bit more extensively about that. We're going to have to adopt a fee structure for ongoing maintenance and cost recovery and what we want that to look like. I can tell you, no matter what we do, it's going to be much cheaper than whatever is available now. We're also going to need to do a detailed analysis and plan for how the procurement's going to work. We haven't, we've reached out to procurement to kind of tell them that this is coming, but we haven't had all those internal meetings of our bureaucratic staff to go determine kind of how that, what the nuts and bolts are going to be. And then we need to do agreements. We'll have to have agreements with our partners. We'll have to reach out to all of the municipalities to make sure that if they have needs, and the special districts, that we can accommodate their needs in what we're doing. So there's going to be a lot of both policy-level decisions and kind of contracts and agreements that are still coming your way.
Thank you.
So give me money.
Mr. Chair.
You're wondering what I want, to give me money.
Supervisor McLure.
I can say to the fiber thing, I used to be on the Oracle School Board. And trying to figure out how to go one-to-one with computers and all that, we couldn't do it. And our feed was six megabits, like nothing. Fiber came up the road, and we paid to have it brought into the school. We'd dig a ditch, whatever, just bring it over. And we went to 105, and then had a wireless network, you know, or had our own network on campus. And it was, it was great. You know, the kids could actually use their computers, you know, and you could actually upload things. And all the businesses in town there don't have that. And it's slower than, you know, concrete flowing through a straw. It just doesn't work, you know.
Well, and Colin mentioned, but you know, the idea that kind of started this is that using, Peter and his group using E-Rate funds, we built the 320-mile fiber network to all the schools and libraries. So it's the excess capacity in that system, that's actually what we're contemplating using to do this. So it's already kind of releveraging taxpayer resources to do an additional purpose with it. But we need to move fast.
Do you have a question? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
I have a comment. Well, thank you for your work. I remember talking early on to Hama Chu and Leo Liu about this. We need internet in the Copper Corridor, and how impossible it might be. And I spoke with the private folks. And I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think it was Hama Chu who said, well, we could just use the black fiber. And I said, well, what's the black fiber? And used some technical terms. And so I'm really excited about this. It was, it's an easy win. You know, this was a, this was a goal that I had, but obviously, the county employees and contractors executed on. And I'm looking forward to just helping write the check to get this thing done.
This has been something we've talked about for years, trying to get in that area. So I'm very pleased to see us really making some progress.
Supervisor Goodman.
Yeah, to that, to that statement made by you, Mr. Chair, thank you. If I'm not mistaken, I think clear back when I first took office in 2017, part of our strategic plan was to get this moving along so that we did take care of these underserved areas and bring in. And so what's been happening here right now has been a result of, I think, not only the current board, but past, that's actually helped move things forward. And tremendous work you've all done. You know, as you were sitting here talking about the rural areas, I remember one time, and here's one of those stories. As a kid, I grew up, well, up until I was in third grade, we lived around Crisman and University. And that was all desert back whenever I was a kid. And I can remember asking my dad, why are we living out here? And he said, so that you're not infiltrated by a lot of the crap that's out there. And so here we are talking about bringing some of the crap that's out there into these rural communities. And I just remember that story of my dad. But at the same time, recognizing the need for this type of stuff, because you brought it up, economic development, infrastructure is a big key to all of that. And that's one thing that our Sun Corridor needs is economic development. And this is one way to help move that. Plus, with the way things are going, I mean, my kids are always trying to get the grandkids off of the computer and playing the games and everything else. And so these are things that they're needed for the future, though. And so thank you for all your work. And we'll see what we can do to help find that money.
Is there more to your presentation, or is that it?
The rest of it was, I included mainly for your benefit, if you wanted to see the heat maps of the tower locations in more detail, because it was a little, when it was zoomed way out, it was a little harder to read. So this gives you kind of what they're going to look like. And that's it.
Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, Supervisor Sertie.
Like the electrical grid, my district didn't really get mentioned there. But by getting the rest of the county up to speed, does that strengthen the whole, the whole grid otherwise?
I'm not really sure if I understand your question. And your district is covered, it's just called San Tan. There's a portion of your district that is covered in the more northern part of the map, I think.
But by getting the rural areas covered, does that help strengthen the more urban areas too by?
Yeah, it does. Really, just from the perspective of like, the, it just makes it quicker for future rollouts, because like, the brains of the system will need to be built for the Copper Corridor. And that brains of the system will be the same for everybody. And so going out there and building that will just be quicker. But as far as like, you know, making it more resilient, not really. It's kind of like a tower goes up, and there are multiple radios on that tower. And so it's kind of served by the local tower in the community.
But it helps connectivity all over?
Definitely. Yes. Yeah.
Like cell service in my area, where I live, I lose it on my way home.
Oh, yeah. Well, from that, from that perspective, like, one of the exciting things about like Zayo coming in and building out this network is, like, it's kind of a benefit in that you probably haven't heard of them as a commercial provider, because their main clients are AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile. And so like, what they, kind of our go-to-market strategy really is, you know, we're going to build out these very cost-effective networks for K-20 and public sector. And then the next customers that come on top of that are cellular providers. So in turn, yeah, there's kind of a second order benefit that way.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a question, real quick. So after we get all the towers up, and we've got everything talking to each other, how's it get into the house? I mean, there's got to be, you know, every family will have to have some kind, is there a cost to that? And or how will we be able to?
Yeah. And actually, Peter, do you want to come up and talk a little bit to that? But so there is a radio that would go on the outside of the house, in some cases, but not every case. In some cases, the strength to the, to what you just plug into the laptop will be sufficient to go back to the tower.
Okay. Just down to the, now to the resident, how do we handle that?
So that's the part where I think it's in the other, where Tammy mentioned that we don't really have an answer for you right now. But there is going to be a partnership with other vendors that are local, like, local people that work within the space, like, yeah, Simply Bits, Airbeam, you know, James from Copper Net and stuff like that. So we're going to partner with them, and they'll be able to connect the homes up. But they won't incur the cost of like, building the tower, right? So normally, the consumer is the one who has to cover that cost. So they'll probably like, end up handling off to like, to the consumer for $50. But then we're hoping that we could reduce that cost to possibly like $20 or $15 for the consumer. So that's the idea. But like I said, that's sort of the other part, we're not sure yet.
That's like the next step.
Right. We need to develop that part.
Okay.
Right.
Mr. Chair, you're talking about having a hotspot, like in the house, to connect up to the tower?
Yep.
Yeah, exactly.
The $10 a month hotspot or whatever.
Right. And the reason why this would work better than a traditional hotspot today is privately owned by the county, you know, far less utilization than what T-Mobile might be putting on that. And then also the improved fiber on the backend that makes it go better.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Chairman, you covered one of my questions about connectivity. And I was going to echo Supervisor Sertie's comment. In Mammoth, I have to drive to the top of the hill to get a phone call. And our regular internet connectivity through the county isn't enough to do a Zoom call, so you have to hook to a Wi-Fi hotspot. And so this, you know, to me, you know, the economic opportunities available for the Copper Corridor now, people can move to San Manuel, be a programmer, and at-home accountant working remotely. And so to me, this, the investment of $2 million bucks, when Ms. Ryle said $2 million, I almost fell off my chair. I said, this is fantastic, to get this kind of service for that kind of money. I think it's well invested. So thank you again. We'll work on that.
So just to give you a little bit of history, the E-Rate project actually came out to about $34 million. So that was the grant that, yeah, the fiber, that we received from the FCC through a program called USAC. And so I told the school districts that these are all And so I told the school districts that these are all dedicated. Like, we're not sharing it with the community. It's strictly for the K-12s in the library. And that's why we have so much excess capacity on that fiber optics.
Well, this is fantastic to see this. Yeah, so. Any other questions or comments? I'll just say job well done and look forward to more updates.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that brings us to item number five on the agenda, which is an exec session. So I'll need a motion to move into exec session.
So ordered.
I have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, we're going to go into exec session. Saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, we are adjourned.